Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Spokane County Planning Commission. Today it's Thursday, June the 12th. It is 9:00 AM. The public may participate in person or remotely by utilizing our web link. And telephone conference links, star nine to raise hand, star six to speak. Individuals limited to one three-minute comment period for any item. Please keep your comments specific to the current agenda item. Chat is not supported. We have four commissioners here, which constitutes a quorum. At this point, let's introduce our commissioners.
Lonnie Edwards.
Clyde Hossi.
Pete Rayner.
Stephen Poehl. I am your chairman, and welcome, everyone. The first item of business is to allow members of the public to comment for items that are not on this current agenda. Been published. So the floor is now open for anyone who would like to address the commission, either online or in the audience. And we'll give it a few minutes for people to collect their thoughts. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have no yellow slips from...
No yellow slips?
No.
No one? All right. Going once, going twice, no one online, no one has their hands up? Okay. Next item is a workshop. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chestney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Greetings, everybody. Hope your summer is off to a good start. We have a lot to go through today, and this is not going to be a lecture from the planning director. We hope this is going to be an interactive session. So we welcome interruptions, and we will be looking to stop and discuss and have some questions as we move forward. We're going to cover some of the ground of what has been going on in the background in these last few months since you last met. And then the guts, I guess, of the session are going to talk about the environmental impact assessment and how that tool will be guiding our work for the next six months or so. So where we've been, there have been a series of placemaking forums, two sessions each in West Plains, in our north area, and out in the East Valley. Those were chosen not because they are specific target areas, but only because it represents a fairly broad distribution of residents. And there's a lot that could go on in all of those. We will talk about those here in a little bit. And then we had the first round of rural outreach sessions. Open houses in Valley Ford, in Deer Park, and in Chenee. Well-attended. We really got some good comments and had a chance to talk with folks about rural demands, rural lifestyle, and what they're feeling for pressures of development and growth as well. So in the placemaking sessions, what came out of that? You saw the raw scores last time we met, but generally, you know, four things kind of popped to the top that had general support from most of the attendees at all of those sessions, and you can see them here. And it fits into that idea of developing or trying to build neighborhoods as we grow and not just subdivisions. While that was still a somewhat difficult subject to communicate, once we started having the illustrations up there and talking about, what does that mean, and particularly these three things, people were starting to say, yeah, those are the things we would value in our groups moving forward. You'd see the strongest here was parks and trails. And then, you know, kind of the general feedback you can see on one side. Public safety is always a concern, infrastructure. And again, coordination between cities and the county, which we have tried to be a good planning partner as this session has gone on. And we're generally working well with our attendance cities in those planning. And we'll be doing more as we get through the EIS side of this. So in the rural lands, these were the three. Like I said, we understood better what was going on in the different areas, particularly development pressures, the pressures of an ag economy, the variances that happen from year to year in crops, and how they think and interact with their small towns and developments. So you can see here, obviously, concern about urban sprawl, economic pressures. And here's the kind of desired changes. Water and resource management, bigger than we probably expected when we started this process a year ago. But we're finding out just how challenging that can be outside of our Spokane Valley restroom prairie aquifer. So now, moving these things forward, there are two of the technical advisory committees that are poised for upcoming activity. First is the natural and rural lands. You see on the 18th that are going to be looking at the best available science draft from our consultants, that's related to the critical areas ordinance. And then starting to prioritize and think about how we're looking at the various rural aspects. And then the climate and resiliency, which has also been meeting, that comes up next week, looking at the audits and getting into starting to develop policies that will satisfy this new requirement of Growth Management Act and how it can integrate into notably the land use and transportation sides of our growth as a parameter of how we're going to plan for and control future growth. So the next step... Now, let me stop for a second. Any thoughts or questions from what you've heard, what you heard last time about the public aspects of our outside sessions? Or has anyone contacted you? Have you heard anything from our public? Got it. I will say, one thing we found that is a very different challenge than city planning is, to a large degree, when we're talking to folks that are already in unincorporated urban growth areas and the rural areas, there's not a lot of pressure for new development. It's more of, we really don't want to grow. We like what we have, we want you to protect what we have. And it's a different kind of participation than you have with the city. You know, for example, city has 27 organized neighborhoods. They have the community assembly. So you've got different kind of touchpoints for public outreach. That organization doesn't exist in the unincorporated county. So getting people to show up at an event is more of a challenge for us, which is why we've tried to drive as much as this to the web for participation as we can as well. But Clyde, I saw you were...
I enjoy being on a positive mode, but I have to throw out a rock. I wish I was more aware of the public hearings on the... For the three of them that were done in the rural areas, because this one of them is right in my backyard. I wasn't even aware of it, because I feel that we as commissioners were appointed by our commissioners to be a listening ear to the public. But if I'm not aware of it, I don't know what to do. I find myself very much so disconnected.
Clyde, I appreciate that, and I...
I'm being honest.
I will check into that. We make it a point to send to you, to all of the commissioners, every event that goes on. And if we've somehow got lost in the email of some kind, we'll check and make sure that that's not the case, because we absolutely want you to know about these and to be there if you can.
Thank you.
I happen to have the fortune or misfortune of living and working on two different boundaries between the city and the county. And being in the business I'm in, I'm right in the middle of all this. And it seems to me that we are dealing with a nearly impossible situation because there's a boundary. And when we create, like when the NEPDA was created, they were prohibited from pirating from each other adjacent lands. Well, how do we solve parks when city limit is dense right up to the boundary? And then we go to urban reserve or we go to rural. Trying to solve some of those problems on at least half of the north side of the boundary of the city limits with the county of Spokane is a real challenge. And I don't know if that's addressed or even thought about, but it sure seems like it's tough.
It is. It is very challenging. We have started at least working with the city of Spokane to exchange information about what's going on. We haven't yet got into a more formal process. But one of the things that our two commissioners that are more involved in the urban side of the county have asked us to work with their... Or they're going to work with their counterparts, so to speak, on the city's council to try to have a more representative group that can meet in these areas. And so we're talking about, for example, Commissioner Waldorf has an interest in the Shiloh Hills area on the north side, as well as the South Gate Moran Prairie group on the south side. And both of those are interfaces with city-county right on their borders. So at the very least, what we want to talk about, you know, further down line, you know, design and development standards, so that the standards of one street, if it's attaching to the city, generally meet the standards of the other street. Trail connectivity wasn't really even thought of in the past, and that's something that we've heard is highly desirable. So we have to have a more hands-on connection with the cities in those urban growth areas, because they... You know, while cities are not in the business of annexing, so those are going to be county-urban islands almost, you know, in perpetuity. They're still connected to the cities. And the people who live there, aside from their property tax bill probably, don't really care or know even sometimes which side of the line they're on. They want to be able to drive on that street to get to the grocery store in the city and come back, go on a trail system that might connect a county park to a city park. So we're very aware of that issue, and that will be one of the next things coming up as we start this EIS, what we call alternative session, which the city is also doing on a parallel track. Jumping ahead then, the next issue, and I believe we had some of these audits in your packet on the web. We've been going through a policy audit, both staff and consultants now, for the better part of a year. And that, most simply put, is to look at the existing comprehensive plan and identify everything from goals and policies that may have run their course, maybe obsolete, out of date, to all the way to the other side of what's missing and how have we adapted those policies from the 2001 plan so far up here to 2025. And you can see sort of the kind of general framework, some of those categories that we're looking for. GMA consistency obviously is very important to us. We worked very hard over the last four years to come back into GMA compliance. We intend to stay there. And so making our plan solid and compliant is obviously goal number one. And then we work on our other issues. The regional consistency probably is almost jargon for exactly what you're asking about. Better city-county connections and consistency in our development standards and issues. And then all the way down to, you know, local plans and even, as we just call it, administrative cleanup. Things get messy over time. So here's the flow of how that generally works. We're at that initial audit stage now. We'll be cleaning up those red line documents and making some comments and suggestions, and then that will be a focus for public engagement. That will show up at your next meeting in July, among other things. And by then, we'll have a chance to have had some of that with our technical advisory committees and other aspects of our outreach. That will then lead to, as you might imagine, refinements of that. And then that helps guide the EIS alternatives. And we'll get to those here in a little bit this morning. And then when we get to, obviously, finalizing. And just a reminder, the original final date for our plan work was June 30th, 2026. The legislature did extend that. The governor signed that bill. And so now our deadline has been moved to December 31st. So it gives us the extra six months to make sure these policies, and more importantly, the development regs, the zoning regs, the subdivision regs, shoreline master program, the CAO, have time to be discussed after the plan goals are in place. And now, how are we going to implement this? So it's a... We're grateful for that extension, and we will use it well. And even probably better news, Commerce has created a system by which we can extend our grant funding through December 26 and not have that cut off at June 30th. So... So we're administratively, we've got what we asked for and we're grateful for it. Which means we'll be before you for another 18 months on pulling this together. So the EIS, we've talked about it briefly. Some of you probably were through this the last time we did it, which was a very long time ago. And the county has simply included it by reference ever since. Well, as we all know, too many things have changed in development, in terms of GMA, in terms of rules, the economy. And so it's time for a full rewrite, a full re-understanding of what that is. The comment period, we opened on April 29th after we briefed the board. We closed that scoping comment period on May 30th. We're absorbing those comments. The comments we received from individuals, agencies, organizations are all on our web under the EIS tab. And we're going to run through a number of those highlights here in a minute. The draft EIS is something we anticipate coming out by the end of the year. And so that's our, like I said, that's our new framework, so to speak, for how we will be looking at these growth plans as they relate to actual land use, transportation, CFP items as we go forward. So you can see kind of a quick list of comments we received, general topics of interest. Not really surprising in there. Most of that is fairly typical. It generally parallels the GMA structure of required elements. And then from the jurisdictions, joint planning is still valued from all of our, at least the metro core jurisdictions. The UGA, lots of interest, of course, in whether there will be a realignment of the UGA or how that's going to be happening. And we're going to be talking about that as we move on today. And then we did receive UGA expansion letters from the City of the Valley, Medical Lake, Deer Park, and Airway Heights. And those will be part of our discussion. So highlights from Futurewise. As certainly part of their mission, they're recommending that we do everything we can to accommodate our future growth within the existing metropolitan boundaries, existing urban growth areas by, in the simplest sense, upzoning or finding more density accommodations within the existing built environment. That is a priority to start. It's our required first step to start. And then they've identified at least a few other interests, the water resources and transit, the impact of the wildlands urban interface, which we've all been even more acutely aware of since 23. And I'm sure those of you that have downloaded the wildfire app on your phones have noticed just dozens of small brush fires in the last couple of weeks that have popped up in and around the county. So that wildland urban interface is something that is not an academic or abstract concept. Commerce, some of these are kind of technical. Each alternative study the same overall capacity and guidance for the urban growth areas. And they mentioned the swap provision here. What we're looking at, the more successful we are at accommodating growth within the urban built environment and the urban boundaries, the less pressure there is to add land to the urban growth areas. However, there are areas that are at the end of their growth cycle that are running out of land. And so generally, what we're likely to see is an overall reduction of acres in the various UGA polygons in the county. But they will probably move around a little bit to be better positioned to accommodate growth in areas that are best suited for it. And that's, that's not a forecast. It's just sort of a sense of where we are from our early analysis. Water resources will be a big issue. As you will probably recall from comp plan amendments in 23 and 24, there were issues with some of our water districts being unable to serve additional taps in some of these areas until they either found or acquired water through purchase, converted some irrigation rights into domestic rights. And so water outside of the city and outside of the Spokane Valley Rath from Prairie Aquifer, water is a very concerning issue for planning in Spokane County. Avista has been a good partner so far. We will be working with them pretty closely, both in terms of their own needs and for them to better understand where the growth patterns are likely to go in the first five, 10, and 20-year horizons. And then some general comments from our community. Critical areas, UGA aligning with population and employment. And that's always a good point. Most of the urban growth area discussions so far has related to population and housing. The population forecast is what generated most of the land capacity analyses. Now, the city and the counties are going through adjusting their need for allocating housing by income band. And that's a different process. We've never done that before. And that's going to shape what capacities we really have in our, within our boundaries. So just a couple of quick comments, and these are initial requests. None of these are, suggest that this is an agreed upon formula. This is simply the request from these various communities. Deer Park understands in that the urban growth area that is currently attached to them on their south side and their southwest side across the highway is going to be very difficult to serve with urban services. Running pipes under that highway is going to be very expensive. And so they would like to abandon that, or more accurately, they would like to shift that to their northern side where they had some existing urban growth area. And then that parcel in purple at the top is a piece of city-owned property. And they're requesting essentially sort of an interstitial extension to have, to create an urban growth area that connects that parcel. Like all of these, these urban growth areas, you know, it's fine and it's a good study to put them on a map so we can all see what you're thinking. But the urban growth area has to be supported by the population, housing, and employment growth that is forecast, in this case for Deer Park, through 2046. If that can justify 295 acres, then we can defend that to the hearings board. If it can't, then that 295 will have to be modified to fit their growth patterns within the flexibility of having that market factor to accommodate things that we don't anticipate. Medical Lake, a similar shift, notably on their far southwest corner. There was urban growth area added years ago. We could, I can only presume it might have been anticipated that the, excuse me, the hospital might have expanded in that direction at some point in the future. But that's gone unused for 35 years, so they're willing to, or reflecting the fact that it doesn't belong in an urban growth area. And they want to reduce their area on the north side. Their UGA on the north side is generally, it's right at, it was drawn at the edge of the JLUSS or the MIA 34 boundary protecting Fairchild Air Force Base. But nonetheless, on their north side, it's harder to get there. It's harder to serve that. And they would prefer to shift their growth area to their east side along the highway that is both easier to serve and better linked for transportation access. So that's their request. Airway Heights, a little harder to see there, suggesting, among other things, they're looking kind of at the swap idea that the county's off-road vehicle park, which is in the urban growth area on their northwest side, isn't going to be developed in urban form anytime soon. It will remain the ORV. So it does not need and should not have an urban growth area designation. They want to reposition that in a way to accommodate their growth. And so we'll be, they're working through that process now. We will be working with them. We have told Airway Heights, from at least the beginning of my part of this administration, we will do everything we can to help them because they are so severely restricted by the contours and things protecting the air force base, that they have more restraints or constraints on growth than probably any other municipality in the county. And so we will try to help them grow to the east and to the north, which are their path of least resistance. The City of the Valley has not produced any maps yet, but they have said, or they have characterized their initial assessment that they are short on commercial and industrial land and expect to grow north of the river and east. So a little more nebulous approach, but these are the four that have requested something specific. And then the City of Spokane, at the moment, has simply requested taking urban growth area out that is currently bounding only rights of way. These were done, again, at the origins of UGA and shortly after that. Sometimes for the county's purpose to better control access on and off of county roads or limited, so it didn't become definitive like a city street. Those no longer serve a particular purpose. And so we will be looking at, and it's more than these three. There's probably a dozen or so of these little fragments throughout the county. Some north and south of the City of the Valley, most of them on the West Plains area. It'll ultimately add up to a certain number of acres, but these will, we will clean up that part of the urban growth area boundary. So that's the quick review of where we had requests on the urban growth area. Any thoughts from any of you? Or is there anybody with their hand up? Oh, we do. Mr. Chairman, you're welcome to recognize a member of the audience if you choose.
Someone has their hand up. Let's let him talk. Three minutes. You do the timing.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Hi, Kevin.
Hey, guys. Just a real quick point of clarification. There are the little bits of UGA on some parts of the map that we're asking to be removed. Those are the ones that kind of popped up randomly in the last couple of years. The three that you see on the screen right now, that's a request to add to the UGA. Those three locations, and actually, one of them, the two right-hand maps are the same street alignment. They're just in two pieces. Those are, we're requesting that those be added to the UGA so that the entire roadway right-of-way is in the UGA. It just, it helps us with facilities planning or if we need to put a pipe in that road when it is built. So just to be clear, there are some UGAs are requesting to be removed. There are some were requesting to be added. I just wanted to clarify that.
No point.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Show noted. Thank you, Kevin.
That's where we get into the weeds of planning, where almost no one cares about it except the additional governments.
It's all about the details, you know? Appreciate the chance to talk.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Other hands? Anyone in the audience, Commissioners?
Ahead of ourselves here. Okay. The core of environmental impact assessment and the ultimate environmental impact statement is creating study alternatives. We're looking at creating probably three alternatives. One is called essentially alternative zero, which is a current state. Given everything that's changed, how would we assess environmental impacts if we make no changes to our plan, goals, policies, and development regs? It's kind of a standard, gives you a baseline in a sense. It's also pretty unrealistic that that would be chosen by the Commissioners as the preferred alternative. The second alternative, we'll be looking more at if we keep most things in place but change our development regs to accommodate this neighborhood development instead of subdivisions or higher density mixed-use development. What does that look like? And then a third one will probably be the more aggressive, as our consultants like to call them, the bookends. One is here, and then there's one out on the other end that would be a UGA modification, a more radical approach to development guidelines. And the Commissioners, with your recommendation, will be able to pick anything within that range of, as we say, the bookend. So we're going to talk through how some of that will go here in a minute. You can see some of the topics, land use patterns, particularly transportation and utilities. These are, not surprisingly, very much analogous to what we have to do for capital facilities planning to determine, you know, not just the study areas for the EIS, but can they support urban development? Are they prepared to support urban development? So here are the major kind of topics and some of the benchmarks we'll be using to create those alternatives. You can see here the housing capacity by area median income. You've heard Tate and before that, and Heat and Bongo, talking about how we've reached that analysis based on the numbers we were given from the Office of Financial Management. Then facility availability, which is the level of service. This is very much the capital facilities element that comes into this. Employment growth, which until now, we've not talked about a lot. We've been focused so much on residential growth. But we know, oh, we know two things. One is the Growth Management Hearings Board found in 2015, or they contended that the county had a UGA that was unwarranted in, notably in light industrial land. And I think the claim was it was 1,200 acres more than we could absorb in the 20-year period. We're aware of that. We're also looking at what kind of absorption has been in that light industrial area in the last 20 years. What does that track for the future? And how do we leave ourselves the opportunity to capture good industrial development without breaking that UGA boundary? So there's both an art and a science to this side of it, and we'll be putting that together. And along with these, we will be working hand-in-hand with Commerce, and we will have conversations with Futurewise. We don't intend to surprise anybody with a document at the very end and say, here, take it or leave it. We will look at receiving whatever thoughts and criticism we can use to make this, back to that previous bullet, a GMA compliant plan. So environmental impacts, yeah, clear part of that. Now, where do we start going? Or where's the rubber hit the road? This is the map, and this, of course, is just the I-90 metro core. Our predecessors, some of you, made these decisions in your earlier years on this panel. Those green areas, the yellow and the orange areas are the urban growth areas now as they're defined. The orange have the other designation of the formal joint planning area. The green is the urban reserve. Those were the lands that your predecessors, some of you, and ours looked at and said, this is the 40- or 50-year horizon. The 20-year horizon is that urban growth area, but where do we go next? And let's identify those now. You probably recall, the urban reserve has a minimum lot size of 40 acres, and that's designed to preserve larger lots for ultimate urban development. So they're not divided into two acre parcels, which are virtually impossible to reassemble or restitch together for an edge city. So those are clear parts of the study area. And they're not without challenges. You know, on the south side, those very large areas, east of I-90, on either side of 195, and going up into Moran Prairie. We all know how difficult it is to move east-west anywhere in that area. It's almost impossible right now because of the bluffs, because of the creek, because of the railroads. So solving some of these issues to make them useful for urban development may be intractable. And it may be that some of those shift away from urban reserve in the next 20 years just because they may not ever be feasible for urban development. They might be well-suited for rural development in perpetuity. Or at least the connection part of that. In the middle, off the Glen Rose area, again, urban reserve area. Also, a lot of residents, much like the Five Mile Prairie on the north side, that simply like their rural lifestyle and have no interest in being part of an urban growth push in those directions. So you've got, where do we grow that has the best scientific capability? Urban services, CFP, and whatnot. And then part of what you react to is representing citizens is, well, there's also the concern of, I don't want this. This is not suitable for what This is not suitable for what we have, and so we will have to work through that consideration matrix as we go on. Northwest of Five Mile Prairie, urban reserve area, another large, large tract, I believe probably 600 acres or so. Can I, hmm? About a thousand? And with, with everything in the northwest part of, of the city, it has transportation issues. There are very few roads in and out. If we put another, you know, five, six thousand homes on that thousand acres, is there sufficient transportation capacity to serve that? So those, those will be some of the, the scoring mechanisms that you'll start to see here in the next few months. And then smaller ones. Moving up, you know, the, the urban reserve area between the city of Spokane, the city of the valley on the north side, north of Millwood. A lot of that is publicly owned land, so that may or may not really be suitable for that, coming off of Beacon Hill. And then some of the areas to the southeast of the valley, north of Liberty Lake, were again identified in the past plan as being our first round of study areas. So we will be both staff and consultants looking at what we call scoring to give all of that an equal, fair look on evaluations, and then looking at where is the best available land for development? Thoughts?
I've brought this up before, and I'll bring it up again. We're seeing the largest of the small minimum subdivisions of rural lands being gobbled up through the certificate of exemption process. And you made the comment that you can't subdivide two acres. As a developer, I can tell you it's almost impossible to subdivide a quarter section or a section of 10-acre parcels in the future. The economies don't work. And, and what I see us doing is very intentionally creating a need for a new city in Lincoln County. Because we're, we're, we're subdividing, I'm, I'm hearing of some of the prime agriculture being bought up in 20-acre parcels. I mean, and I, and I, I mentioned this the last time I brought this up. If we don't deal with the property around the city and just plan on, we're, and, and then, and I looked at the process we got that you showed us of developing the north Y area. I mean, that's a nightmare from a development standpoint to try to create a community out of what we've got in place in some of these spots. And I just think we need, we need to look at what we're creating, because 20, 30 years happens pretty fast.
Yes, it does, notably because the patterns are set so early, so quickly. And once that pattern's in place, it's, it's impossible, it's almost impossible to modify it. So we agree. Clyde?
I, I say thank you first. Please walk with me if you would. I'm one of those people that was here 20 years ago looking at this thing. And that's one that you're referring to. I'm the old man. I, I look of, at the time when we first began, and I'm sorry to take this time to do this, but I have to. When we looked at what growth management was, what a strange term. We studied and studied and studied. We worked very due diligent, and I'm using the word "we" first for the board that sits up here, and the staff was always giving us good information to prepare ahead of the topic of the day, because it's, it was all new. I'm the only one here that hasn't, who has been through this, and I understand the process and the procedure that has to go through each one of these steps. And even we, at the time, we failed because we didn't get the full compliance by the state. And we were fined, what, 400? We were sued for 400, I don't know how many thousands of dollars. Anyway, and I don't want to go, as a Commissioner, I would not recommend we go back there again. We have so much homework to do here again. And Scott, I'm going to be very straightforward, communications is the, the secret to a good marriage, to a good commission, to good practices of doing what you were intended to be doing. I am totally struggling right now, not knowing what the flow chart is. I have, and I'm going to use the phrase, we're going into a battle, which means we have to be looking at all of these things coming at us. We have to have a plan how we're going to attack it, and the good thing about it, we know what we did for the last 20 years, what we screwed up on. I don't want to be part of the board that is going to be screwing it up again. That's a, a big concern of mine. Communications need to be done, and I'm very open and honest. I would have been at some of those open meetings, I was at one of them, but not in May, I wasn't aware of it. And that's like when I, my wife was with me, I could say, yes, dear, but now she's passed, and I, I have to be really aware of what's going on around me, as we all do. And I am saying I would like to see the copy of the flow chart that is being used as our guideline for the next GMA for the next 20 years. I want to, I want to study it, I want to be part of the making of it. If I'm here to sit to make decisions, I, I just don't throw it lightly. Because the last 20 years, we're paying for it right now. So I'd like to see a copy of the flow chart of what we have until the 2026, our completion, so I know where I'm going. I think that's very important. I feel I owe the people out here in this audience or in my district that responsibility, I want to be held accountable, is what I'm saying. I'm really after that right now. We have to resolve some problems, Scott, and I fully, I, I almost know a little bit too much of what is happening with some of that and how it has to be handled. We as a board, just shonite us, is not good enough for me. So I apologize. I, I had all my notes because things bother me and I'm very concerned, and I take my responsibility up here, very sincere. Because I was asked to look into this, and I've been there for the last 20 years. I haven't served on the board for 20 years, for those of you who don't know. I was called to be brought back in because I've been through it. So anyway, thank you for your time, thank you for listening to me. I would like to see a flow chart of where we're headed this month, next month, the month after, and how we get to the end, because we will stand there and support you as a board. Sorry.
Thank you, Clyde. And I guess the, we will, we will give you something more specific. Today's meeting and outlining the environmental impact statement and that process, that is the framework, that's, that is the flow chart that we'll be using to move this forward, and, and we will put that into, we're, we're working on that in our own now in this work plan. You saw the very broad one on the first slide. That is working into a, what are we doing this month, what are we doing next month, where are we talking, where are the touchpoints? That will be, we'll get that out to you well ahead, but that will be the guts of what we're doing to move this forward. And you, and that's the framework we'll be using to have those discussions, ask those questions, and work with you through the public. So we will get that to you. What I wanted to do in this next couple of slides, these are the areas that were identified in the planning process last time. Subsequent to that, we have a, a number of landowners who have expressed an interest in being ready for development in the future. This is a quick map, again, the metro core. Those salmon-colored polygons are specific landowner requests for UGA inclusion. And you can see there, they've, some of them are in, most of them are in urban reserve areas, so they have some kind of, they've, they've, they would have crossed that initial hurdle of being initially eligible. Some that are true islands are, are simply not going to make the cut in this first round because they, you know, one of the obvious parts of, of an urban growth area refinement or a boundary change is it needs to be adjacent to contiguous with other urban services, and so the islands are not, are not going to get there. On the southern half, you can see some of what's being proposed near Airway Heights, off in the edges of the west plains urban growth area, down toward the Four Lakes, Lammred and Intersection. And then some smaller landowners in that Moran Prairie, Glen Rose area. So next steps, like I said, we'll be, we'll be doing, these, we'll be looking at these alternative developments. Those will be before we get a chance to be discussed and finalized before you next time, and then they will get a chance to go to the board for their evaluation. We will be asking them to pick a preferred alternative. And that preferred alternative will be something that includes, you know, the input from this group to be sure, but it'll have both policy implications and land implications. And then you can see the, the process there that'll be vetted through that system. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, we are open for any broad range of questions that you may have for us.
The floor is open. Are those hands up on there? I can't hardly see from this angle on the, okay. Didn't want to ignore those. Now would be the time for contributions? Members of the Commission? Members of the public? Someone's got their hand up? All right. Eric?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can, Eric, thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Eric Lowe, and I represent my, my mother who owns a significant portion of land at, in Leetaw Valley. If you looked at the, the prior maps for landowner interest, we're that big chunk just south of Eagle Ridge. And I just want to point the Commissioners to our EIS statement, we prepared a pretty lengthy one for the scoping process. We really want to be good partners with the city, with the county, with the neighbors, and to develop a neighborhood sort of along the lines of what has been discussed previously, what the community has wanted. We're happy to come and present to the, the Planning Commission, happy to, want to coordinate with Scott and with his counterpart Spencer Gardner at the city to develop the, the best possible scenario for Leetaw Valley to accommodate a lot of the growth and transportation issues and commercial issues, commercial opportunities in Leetaw Valley. So just wanted to throw that out there, that we are ready, willing, and able to coordinate with the county, with the city, with neighborhoods in any way we can. So that's it.
Thank you, Eric. I'm Scott. Any comments or?
We've, we've received their, their information, and again, all of those letters and things are posted on the web for public viewing as well as your, your viewing.
Thank you. Other comments? If you would, give us your name and we have a three minute, there's a, come right over, you get the, you get the, the major area here.
Perfect. My name is Dana Leroy, I represent Habitat for Humanity Spokane. And I just, I wanted to comment, as you're considering all the alternatives for the EIS, especially in the areas that are close, sort of in the more urban parts of the unincorporated county, considering sort of good middle housing options, for we focus on affordable homeownership. We're in a pretty severe crisis, not only for housing generally, but for affordable homeownership for folks in that sort of lower-middle income in our community. And a, a really viable solution for our specific community is, is sort of middle housing, townhomes, small, small homes on small lots, cottage style. Think a lot of like what Jim Frank does in Kendall Yards and other places. So as you're considering these different things with the EIS and the different alternatives, this is something that we want to encourage. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
This is great.
Good morning.
Name?
My name is Sean Elston, and I own some land up on Five Mile, along with my sister who owns an adjacent parcel. And it happens to be immediately next to schools up there. Right now, it's in agriculture, and we've got about 90 acres in total between all three parcels, but, you know, from a, you know, carrying standpoint, I mean, the agricultural returns are so minimal, it, it, you know, is hard to, even though it's been a family farm for decades, you know, it, it's really not going to go anywhere that way. So, you know, I'd like to ask you guys to consider, you know, those areas that, you know, are ag plots that are too small to be really functioning family farms any longer, be considered, be brought within the urban growth area, and we have put in a request to, to have our, our lots considered, so. Then you're making your decisions on boundaries, that's something to consider.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? This is a good time. Welcome.
Morning, I'm Paul with Spokane Hutterian Brethren. We're a large farming community out on the west border of the county. On Wood Road. And we've been operating under a conditional use permit since 1960, and we are in need of a better setup. Where we need about another 15 housing units out there. And where we're at, it's large tract ag, and we're a community of about 20, 20 families living together in community lifestyle. And so we really don't fit the zoning laws out there. It's been suggested that we, we become a lamrid. I'm not sure if that is a good idea or not, but we need to maybe research that, look into that a little bit, and I'm wondering if you guys would be, you know, take that into consideration in the, in the future planning. We make, we make our living strictly with farming and egg, farming and ranching, and we all practice a community out there and want to see that grow in a specific area.
Can I ask a question of you?
Sure.
Were you in front of us here about 10 years ago when you were requesting the same thing, or, or there about, I mean, I don't, time flies by.
Yes, the last
That's what I thought.
Conditional egg permit, or conditional use permit was issued, was, I guess, updated in 2000. 25, 25 years ago.
Thank you so much.
If I could just step in to follow that up for a second. We're very much, we are aware of their request. We're looking at what alternatives may exist to help meet their needs. And so it's something that is under consideration. In fact, we'll be working a little bit on it, you know, yet even this week. So we would expect to have some guidance for the brethren in the very near future.
Good morning, Commissioners, Elizabeth Telison with Winston &amp; Kachay. And you give a lawyer an opportunity to talk, so here I am. We've submitted on behalf of CPM Development and a few of its affiliates requests to have additional mineral lands designated within this periodic amendment. We think that it's really important that we continue to take a look, not only on the rural side, but also on the resource lands to ensure that those are designated for the uses that they're intended, that they have and carry with them the land title notices, so that folks moving into the area know what the intended use is for those properties. So you'll see those in the record, we hope that they will be considered as part of one of the alternatives. And in doing that, of course, making sure that those resource lands are being designated appropriately for the uses that are presently there and intended to continue. So thank you all again. Mr. Hase, to your points, it is a lot of information that comes out through this process, it does take a detailed study, and so we appreciate the work that you guys have in front of you, not only with staff, but you guys as well. So thank you in advance, and you have a fun 18 months on the way.
Can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
Have you completed your complete study of the Spokane area for what is available or could be available for mineral resource?
We have not as an individual group. Is that something that would be helpful to you guys? I don't know what the county staff has done.
We can address that in a, perhaps a slightly different way. Through the DNR group, one of their staff, Tricia Sears, has been working behind our, behind the scenes with Spokane County. one of their staff, Tricia Sears, has been working behind our, behind the scenes with Spokane County to create an aggregate mapping analysis. That is complete. We have, there's no action being taken, but it's something we will use to inform us on comprehensive planning. So we do have a countywide resource now to look at potential aggregate deposits. So it's a, it was a missing piece of information that we had. The state was looking for like test cases and we raised our hand and said, yeah, we, we could, we could really use that information.
You know, Scott, that's a very important part because spot, just spot picking here and there does not fly too well for long range planning. And I think that is extremely good. Thank you. I like to see it.
We can do that. We agree. And resource lands, notably mineral lands have all sorts of other, you know, sometimes unintended consequences. Neighboring property owners are rarely happy about the resource lands being put into active use. And yet, you know, as Elizabeth noted, it's an important part of the Growth Management Act, so far so as to say resource lands are, are protected for, or for their uses in the future so that they are not waylaid by wrong reasons or by unrealistic reasons. So they do have a prominence that is beyond most things in the GMA.
Anyone else? Hands up, none? No one else in the audience?
Mr. Chairman, that's, that's all we've got in, in respect to you and Mr. Hasey. We will be putting a little more detail together for you to walk you through this. A lot of that will be coming together, some as quickly as today with our, our normal Thursday studio with our consultants, getting that work plan put together. And we'll have that before you very quickly. And then we'll get ready for our next meeting.
Can I get a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
From one of the presenters, Habitat. Can I ask? We, affordable housing, and yet that's a very generic word. Can, can you clarify that for me? If we're looking at developing, you know, availability of land, what is? I don't know what the parameter, even what you folks are using.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, this state has a legal definition. We work under the definition of affordable housing that is 80% of the area's median income or below. For us, our organization's laser focused on affordable homeownership. Which I think sometimes in sort of more sort of boundary rural areas is, is sort of a more interesting prospect. And yeah, does that sort of, is it the?
No, I didn't answer my question. What is, bring it down to dollar and cents, just for conversation.
Yes. So we have a, we have a pretty, we have a layered finance system. So we, we build homes. We sell them at the cost of construction, which, which really varies depending on, on land availability where it is. So in the city of Spokane, that can be anywhere from, you know, $250 to $350,000. In the valley, we can bring that down lower. So it's very project specific. And then on top of that, each project has a different funding sources. So maybe they are federal funds, maybe they are a housing trust fund dollars from the state. And so we combine all those monies to get like the final actual price. And so every project is pretty unique, but but
Thank you. It's a moving target is what you just said.
It's moving targets, very complicated, yeah.
With, with, are you saying 250 to 300 for land and build?
Yeah, that, that would, that, that can be our sales price depending on the project. And then we will bring in other down payment assistance privately fund, privately raised monies to help fill any gaps. But it's, it's a very, it's very dynamic. Every project is really unique. Yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
You're, you're uncovering the gorilla in the room. And it's something we've been struggling with for two years. What does affordable housing mean? And Tate is, is here, he can talk through how we work, how we're starting to work through our analyses, which can give you some of the details. The, one of the benchmarks that is, is fairly widely used is, you know, housing and housing costs, including utilities should take up no more than 30% of someone's disposable income. That's sort of the benchmark for what's considered affordable. Lonnie, you, I mean, I can see your eyeballs going up, you know, how, how is somebody going to do that at, you know, $350,000? Exactly. And so that's, it's and yet we are going to be before you with a series of alternatives, not just 80% of area median income and under, but you know, zero to 30%, 30 to 50% and 50 to 80. We have to accommodate all of those bands in this plan. And as, as you might imagine, that is exceedingly difficult when our responsibility is on the edges of cities, not in the core of cities.
I, I would like to comment that I appreciate your input on that. I do have to agree that it'd be great in the general conversation, oh yeah, we can build it for 250, you know, 350, you know, anymore it's, you know, anymore it's in my eyes, and I'm, I could be way wrong, is a half a million to even begin with is affordable. And I don't even, that word isn't even fitting it. So knowledge is what I'm after.
Well, and even recently, the median new home price in the county has jumped up to 450,000. That's the median.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Anything else to present from your staff today? So we can move on.
We can move on.
Any further comments before we move on, which will include the approval of the minutes? See, and then we'll, yeah, go ahead, Pete. Okay.
It'll come later. Talk about next meeting.
Oh, okay. The minutes from April 17th were included in your packet online. I downloaded mine, says draft on here. I don't see any originals here in front of me. They're right here.
I thought we had them up in front of you. We'll make sure you get your signature blocked before.
Before I leave today. So the minutes are published. And they were in your mailbox. Are there any additions or corrections or comments to the minutes? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt those minutes from April 17th. Nothing. Do I hear a motion to adopt? So moved by Pete? Second by Bonnie? Well, there's a favor adopt, the minutes of April 17th signify by saying aye. All opposed by saying no. Those minutes are hereby adopted. Thank you. And when they, when you remove the draft, I'll get them signed and away we'll go. The next meeting is 17th, but there's a staff report comment right here and you're welcome to chime in.
There is, and it's kind of an important one, I think, for you and perhaps our, some of our listeners. Our meetings for placemaking, notably on the West Plains, generated a lot of interest from many individuals who are impacted by stormwater management, by the PFAS and water contamination issues that are happening out there. And we've agreed in terms of our own due diligence for planning in that area. We have been engaging with them to understand more of what they've discovered as well as what we know from our Public Works Department and, and others that are studying the issues. We are going to hold a meeting tentatively the last week in June out at the sheriff's new facility on the West Plains to talk about what we've learned in terms of water planning for the West Plains and gather any, you know, other information from that group. We are, we are trying to offer a, an ear, a listening ability so that as we're looking at future growth and planning in the West Plains, which obviously you know is, is very much a target for that kind of growth. That we understand fully what those folks are being impacted in and what possible solutions there can be to hopefully bring their water back into some sort of uncontaminated state. We don't do engineering, so we don't have actual solutions for that. But in terms of planning for that, you know, the implementation of planning may have to take into account whether suitable water is available for domestic use. And if it, if it can't be for five or 10 years, that's is again, one of those capital facilities, one of those scoring elements that will put a, a brake, it'll put a damper on growth in that area if we can't serve it with water. That said, we've also discovered, I'm sure, you know, you see it in the general news. The forever chemicals issue is not simply a West Plains Fairchild Airport issue. It is now pervasive throughout the United States. And so that's a very frightening thing in many ways, but it also suggests that there are a lot of new companies looking for a way to filter, to ameliorate, to, to address these kind of chemicals. So in one sense, we are very confident that there's a technical solution coming probably in the next five years or so. But until we know more, we have to treat it as, as almost a barrier or a hurdle for development. So that said, we're, we're going to be going back out and talking to that group at the end of the month. We will have that summary of that information for you when we see you again in July.
Am I correct that last fall, we had talked about that on a couple presentations that was, that was given to us for development? But the city had committed 20 years ago to provide the water out there and now they had changed their mind. And again, that was an issue that was going to be cleared up and I've never heard a definition. And if I did, I, I missed it.
I don't, I don't think that's a fair characterization of the city at this point. The, the city of Spokane is providing water to Airway Heights because Airway Heights' own domestic system is compromised. The, the cities have had an intertie for emergency purposes for years, and that intertie is now providing full water service to Airway Heights and its residents. If, and, and, and because the city has that water capacity and water right, in some cases it provides a, a more immediate solution, or at least a temporary solution to some of this. In other words, there is clean water available. Whether the city and others can agree on how the terms of that transaction take place, you know, that's, that's kind of off the county's table, but we can be the facilitator of that discussion by pointing out that growth may not happen here if we can't assure that there's a water supply. And that's in the city's interest as much as the county to increase our economic development footprint. And so it's, it's not a us versus them approach at all. It's, it's how do we use the resource we have effectively? And, you know, the city is very careful about their stewardship and I, I respect that.
To answer your question? Okay, thank you. Pete?
You brought up affordability in the GMA process. We're heading for a train wreck. Very simple. And to call it anything other than a train wreck is to deny reality. Unless we're getting interest rates down to 1%, we're going to have at least 50% of our population can't afford a house. Not, not a house to own, a house to even occupy at today's rents and where the rents are going. And we're supposed to be responsible for driving the ship that makes housing and communities viable and affordable. And we're not going to get there.
We have some hurdles, no question of that.
Who's your Michael? Go ahead.
Sorry.
Say it again.
We need to be able to break up properties a lot, a lot more than what we're able to do right now. And I know that's a state issue. I know that's, it takes, it takes a whole team of people to be able to do that. But to be able to keep things close to the city and still be able to expand and with the county, we need to be able to break up these 10 acre parcels.
There are many alternatives that are flowing, some out of the legislature, some out of good planning. Even our, our own analysis, but the legislature, for example, over the last couple of sessions, three, probably last three sessions, has continued to push cities and sometimes counties to augment through density. In other words, any house or any single family zoning that exists in a city now has to accommodate a duplex, triplex or fourplex. And that was never true before. So there's, there's that part of using the same piece of land for a more intense use. They've also looked at at least a couple, a couple of things. One fairly simple in boundary line adjustments or sometimes what they call a unit lot subdivision, where you can move boundaries around to create a second parcel rather than an ADU, which is on a single parcel. So there's, there's that as another possible tool. And then in the last session, there was a proposal from the home builders to essentially rewrite the short plat or small plat rules for, in the county's case, creating lots in nine or under is a short plat as opposed to a standard plat. In the city, I think it's four. But this would essentially make that entire short plat process an administrative process that would no longer go through the typical subdivision plating public hearing process. And it would allow for those divisions to take place faster. That did not pass the legislature, but it is being seriously studied for likely be coming back up in January. So there, there are a few tools that are kind of coming out from that side. We are talking to the home builders. We're listening to groups that call themselves the Land Coalition and the Housing Coalition. They've produced some information on the cost of housing, comparing it to Kootenay County, among other things. We have asked them, as we do with our cities, we've asked them to show their work. We've asked them to document their citations. So we know where they're getting their information. And that gives us a chance to corroborate that or or well, to use it effectively in our own planning. But it's, what it's important from my perspective is we're, we're talking to those that are in the trades that have their boots on the ground. And so that gives us a way of doing this, other than simply the academic process of we can solve everything with more density.
My boots are on the ground. I'm a builder. Where I live, out on Pion Prairie, which is, some of that stuff needs to start being annexed in a little bit more. There's Whitworth Water, there's all sorts of things. But to be able to get down to affordable housing, five and 10 acre parcels out there going for 400,000 bucks, that's unaffordable. That's just for the dirt. So, and when you're talking interest rates, right now when we're at sixes and sevens, that's a $5,500 a month mortgage. My taxes in Pion Prairie, where I'm at, are now up to 8,700 bucks a year. So, I mean, and I'm not talking about what my taxes are or anything like that. I'm just saying it's getting unaffordable. So if we can take a 10 acre parcel out there and somebody wants 400,000 bucks for it and you can break it down to four pieces, now you can get to an affordable piece of dirt to give somebody a one acre house to still be able to go out and build and somebody put an estimate together. You're still generating tax revenue. You're still generating other things for the county for growth. So we need to be able to really look at some of these parcels and get them broken up. Not just if somebody still wants to have country living or being in, in what Pete's got going on up on Beacon Hill, you know, with what we're trying to do and to help this county grow. We need to be able to do those things.
Thank you, Lonnie. You're, you're hitting on the edges of where I wanted to go is that I really firmly believe that we at the county level here need to take the lead. We have special interest groups that are out there, which I really appreciate because I couldn't cover everything. But we as a county are looked at as to be leaders in finding how to create affordable housing. It's not you, it's not you, and not, not you. It's us as a group. We need to figure it out.
And we need to be able to fight the state on some of these laws and be able to do that. And that's
Yes.
County is a big county. So our voice can be heard.
Your concerns are not unique to Spokane County. I meet regularly with a group of planning directors under the Washington Association of Counties. And we got together a few weeks ago, 23 of us. So including some of the bigger counties, King, Pierce, who are there as well. There are very common interests among all of us that relate to housing, that relate to open space, relate to the Growth Management Act and how it has evolved over these past 35 years. There's no consensus to say, let's throw it out and start over. But there is some consensus to say we thought this was unique to us. Well, look, there's Benton County, there's here, there's here, there's here. And we're all dealing with, you know, renewable energy. We're all dealing with common subjects. So the conversation is starting about how complicated this is going to be and how you can't solve it in any one county. And we do recognize that Spokane County is unique, truly is unique in one sense, that the other border counties, you know, Clark or, or, you know, like City of Vancouver versus Portland. The economics across the river, across the state boundary are remarkably similar. The regulatory systems are remarkably similar. the economics across the river, across the state boundary are remarkably similar, the regulatory systems are remarkably similar. So there's not a lot of pressure. Uh, Watcom County with the Canadian border is a whole different thing. We've got Idaho and Kootenay County, and that it's, we're the only county that has that kind of urban presence on a, on a border with two different tax structures, two different economic structures. And again, we're, we're asking our, our home builders who are, are using that as a reason to say, show us, we need some data. We need to be able to document why this is, is happening. Because if we, if we can't do that, then some segment of our housing isn't gonna build here if it's easier for that money to simply flow to someplace that has a different set of regulations.
I, I have some documentation because we are a border town. And that average price home off the Barker exit is seven hundred and some odd thousand bucks. I can go right over to Post Falls, make the exact same amount of money, and build that house for five hundred. So, I mean, we have definite state problems here on how we are dictated to build. And I make the exact same amount of money. So.
You know, Lonnie, I, again, I appreciate that. I want to, I'll conclude and I'll stop talking. But anyway, my issue is, that's why I'm so concerned about this board. We need to be very proactive in working towards the solution of some of these issues. We cannot ignore it. Don't treat it lightly. I want to be held accountable, and I will be part of this if we want to be accountable. If not, I'm gone.
How do we get outside of our own bubble? We think about our rules and our regulations, and I've been very frustrated in my forty years of being involved in this process of getting a response to that's what our regulations are. Well, can't we change our regulations? No.
No.
That's, that's what we hear. My, more, I, I don't, I'm not gonna be long on this. I'm gonna make a proposal, and that is that we seek RFPs for housing that's affordable and processes that are affordable. I shared with you briefly, there, there's a master plan communities are building housing across the south, the whole southern belt, where they're building nice communities from ground up at two hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit. We, we can't do that. And why can't we do it? Well, maybe we need to find out why we can't do it and what we need to do to do it. But if we don't start soon, what, what, our kids and grandkids are gonna be living in Texas or, or someplace where they can afford to live.
One of the things that we are going to be doing in this twenty-six plan process is looking at the development regs themselves. Um, so our, we have guide rails called the Growth Management Act. Uh, we have to respect that. Within those guide rails, though, is a, actually quite a lot of flexibility for us to define what is our market? How is our market unique? How do we create a market that supports the values of the Growth Management Act? That's different than, uh, doing that in the Puget Sound counties. Um, we will be putting those arguments and studying those with you, uh, so that, and again, we, we're, we're not gonna surprise future wise. We're not gonna surprise commerce. They're gonna be at the table. But we're gonna talk about why this is a legitimately different market and needs to, to create a uh, respect for GMA, but do it in a way that probably hasn't been thought of before. And some of that, we may run up against, uh, hurdles that are insurmountable for twenty-six. But we will also use what we learned in that to say, well, we couldn't get to this point, but now let's keep talking with our fellow counties and start to put together a legislative agenda for the next, for, you know, for January twenty-sixth, for January twenty-seventh. So there, the, the wheel is turning. But we are government, so it turns slowly.
Further comments?
Well, we need to figure out how to get our government to turn a little faster. So, I don't know. I here, what, five, six months ago, I, I, if anybody can remember, look up the notes. I wanna say her name was Suzanne Sevall. Has property up on top of, oh, kind of over by Beacon Hill. Um, she's around, I, I wanna say she's probably sixty-five to seventy years old. She's a retired superintendent from a school. All she wanted to do was split her ten acres with, she's got a house on it. She's hooked up the city water. She wanted to build a little house in, in the back of her, of her property and sell the one out front. She is getting, she needs income. She doesn't get enough from her retirement. And we could, we couldn't even give her an option to be able to do something like that. And, and now with how things are, it's just getting more unaffordable and more unaffordable. And that's not helping out our community. We need to be able to figure out how to help people like her and everybody around us to help grow our community better. Instead of, yeah, if we're government, you know, here, uh, we need to, we need to start working harder and being more efficient and making things better.
I, I understand that, and I would, you know, kind of echo what Pete has said. Uh, there is a, a, a sense of urgency to this that doesn't, at, at least hasn't existed, as I've studied it in the last ten years before, uh, to attract, uh, attack these problems. You know, it's, when, when the legislature is talking about, you know, these unit lot subdivisions and ADU protections and things like that, there is increased awareness. We're not gonna get to any kind of housing solution with the existing rules that we have. We have to come up with some other alternatives. You know, we're, we're considering everything from, um, you know, to try to get an ownership product, uh, to work in lands in, and especially in our areas, which again are on the edges, so they're not usually within transit service. They're not usually within services of, of social services. But if we can still have an ownership product, uh, maybe that's, maybe it's, it's changing the geometry of a lot. Instead of minimum lot sizes, maybe we do away with that. Maybe we do away with the kind of setbacks and things that we've, that we've been imposed on for years that, you know, as, as Pete has, has pointed out, uh, the easy answer forever has been, well, you can't do that because this says you've gotta have this kind of geometry on your lot. Well, what if we get rid of that? And that, that's part of what we study here. It's not something that we go to the, into the zoning code and erase whole sections of development performance. It's one we put through that EIS process. What are the impacts of this happening? Are, are, are the, are the negative economic or environmental impacts significant enough that we can't go in this direction? You know, aqua for protection, groundwater contamination. Uh, it's, no, it's not easy. There, there's dozens of topics to be juggling at the same time. There is, it's not the sense of urgency that the private sector would have, can't have that because we work in a public process. You're representing the public. We have, we go out and talk to the public. We gather. That takes time. But there is a sense of urgency that has not been there before.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Since I said I wouldn't. Are we gonna have another meeting this month as we had scheduled?
We're not, we were not planning another meeting this month. We're planning one July seventeenth.
Okay.
Part of that, Clyde, is the normal meeting on the calendar. Uh, we didn't anticipate that, and we're past the legal notice. Now, we might do a poll and consider, uh, whether we could do a, an extra meeting before the seventeenth. Well, now, the last, the last part of my staff report is, we got to the next meeting, was to tell you and the audience that, starting with that July meeting, we're gonna be back to twice a month for the next twelve to fourteen months. We, we're gonna have things laid out. There'll be some action items coming in as we get into the third and fourth quarter. But we'll be having these discussions on various topics, uh, at every one of those meetings. So we haven't had things, uh, fully prepared because of all of our work with the various cities and, and others. We're getting that together now, and starting in July, uh, it'll ramp up for a solid twelve to fifteen months.
I see us not being able to meet the Growth Management Act by the end of the year. And I'm saying that in all frankness and honesty. If we can't afford housing for half our population, have we accomplished what the GMA requires us to do?
Pete, was that a? I agree with you.
And I'm, I'm, I'm serious about that. And do, do I want to put my name on a recommendation that doesn't meet minimum state requirements? And I think decision makers across the state are waking up to that same reality as Lonnie's talking about. We gotta come up with solutions, and, and we, we need to, otherwise we're wasting our time.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you. I hesitate to ask, are there further comments? And they're certainly welcome. You know, the level and, of intensity of this commission is remarkable. The dedication of this commission and of the staff is really truly remarkable. Um, we've got problems. We've got things we need to get after, got a lot of homework, got a lot of study. Your stewardship is so appreciated. Scott, um, I appreciate everyone who showed up today. These are great citizens to be here, to comment and help contribute and listen. I can't wait. There you go. I'm still talking, Clyde. But, uh, I'm a, I'm just solely appreciative of the process. And, uh, we want to see it through. We want to do the best job we can for our citizens in Spokane County. Thank you for your transparency, everyone.
Thank you. Clyde? I would be curious. Are we the only concerned people here that are talking this way?
I don't think so. I think there's a lot of concerns out there.
That's what I, feedback is what I'm after, and that's, sorry about that, but I just had to say that.
These, these public meetings we're having are, are excellent. There needs to be more of those. Um, I don't know what the average attendance is, but it probably varies from location to location. But, um, kudos to, um, the staff and your administration for making all that happen. It's important.
And, uh, kind of a reminder, as we, we noted earlier, we talked about cities and, and the city neighborhoods that are adjacent to our urban growth areas, uh, our commissioners are interested in, in having a, a handful or a number of those as joint meetings with city and county planning staff, talking about how we plan this area on either side of that municipal boundary. So it's a, it's another way of engaging, you know, city residents in, in recognizing that there are different needs for the county that might be across the street from them. And the county residents who, um, don't always think of them as being any different, you know? If you're on one, if you're on either side of, you know, Fifty-Fifth Avenue on the South Hill or on Fifty-seventh, it feels like you're in the city, even though you're in the county. So there are all these common elements, and, and being able to have that joint effort with our city is, I think, gonna be a very productive session or two.
If there's no more comments, the chair will entertain. Anybody have their hand? No, okay. Um, the chairwoman had a motion to adjourn. So moved by Pete. Seconded by Lonnie Edwards. All those a favor of adjournings, signified by saying aye. All opposed by saying no. We hereby adjourned at this ten twenty-eight. Thank you.